Good evening, welcome to Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District 13, Columbia Heights, Minnesota, School Board Meeting for Tuesday, September 26th, 2017. I'd like to call this meeting in order and ask you to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome. Nat, if you would, please read the roll.
Palmer?
Here.
Mueller?
Here.
Asamari?
Here.
Severson?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Larkin?
Here.
Superintendent Kelly?
Here.
Thank you. Our mission statement, Columbia Heights Public Schools creates worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with supportive small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. First up is the approval of the agenda on adjustments, announcements, and correspondence. We'll start with the agenda. If I could get a motion to move that forward, please.
I'm moved.
Lauren?
Second.
Natty? Discussion. Hearing none, alls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Announcements, October 6th, Friday, there'll be no school, it's a District In-Service Day. On October 10th, at 5:00 PM, there'll be a Subcommittee on Policy. Also on October 10th, at 7:00 PM, there'll be a regular School Board meeting. October 17th, at 5:00 PM, there'll be a School Board Listening Session. October 17th, at 5:30, would be a School Board Work Session. And on October 24th, at 7:00 PM, there'd be a regular School Board meeting. Next up is Correspondence. Superintendent Kelly is going to be Correspondence this evening.
Mr. Chair members of the Board, there's no Correspondence to report this evening.
Okay, thank you. Communication to the Board, Citizen-Employed Representatives, at this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the School Board. The Board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request the Administration to follow up. The Board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. Go again, ma'am. Next up would be the Consent Agenda, which contains the Personnel Report. Do you entertain a motion to move that forward?
So moved.
Laura?
Second.
Molly, thanks Molly. Discussion. Hearing none, alls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Next up is Acknowledgement of Contributions, and if I could get a motion in a second, I'll read it, and then if there's any discussion, we could do it at that time. Start with the motion.
So moved.
Molly?
Second.
Lauren. Okay. Acknowledgement of Contributions Resolution, whereas Minnesota Statute 123B .02 permits School Boards to receive for the benefit of the district, bequests donations or gifts for any proper purpose and apply the same to the purpose designated. In that behalf, the Board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of the pupils thereof. Therefore, be it resolved by the School Board of Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District Number 13 that the School Board accepts with appreciation the contributions detailed in the background in the amount of $2,871.50. And the detailed background is as follows. Donation of art school supplies to Columbia Heights Public Schools Badman Tronic Legal Patent Department for Student Needs, estimated value of $500. Donation of school supplies to Valley View Elementary by American Legion for Student Needs, estimated value of $50. Donation of school supplies to Highland Elementary by Mary Doug Dale for Student Needs, estimated value of $30. A donation of school and technology supplies to Highland Elementary by Be The Match for Student Needs, estimated value of $400. Donation of school supplies to Highland Elementary by Kit Burgoyne for Student Needs, estimated value of $100. Donation of school supplies to Highland Elementary by Donna Scanlon for Student Needs, estimated value $139. Donation of school supplies to Valley View Elementary by Diane Roffler for Student Needs, estimated value of $500. Donation of school supplies to Valley View Elementary by Heights Church for Student Needs, estimated value of $200. Donation of mugs with pens and coffee coupons to Valley View Elementary by Heights Church for Staff, estimated value of $200. Donation of school supplies to Valley View Elementary by Barb Nundall for Student Needs, estimated value of $40. A donation of school supplies to Valley View Elementary by Mark Emme for Student Needs, estimated value of $402.50. And a donation of a gift card to Columbia Heights Public Schools by Kathy Kelly for the all-staff picnic, estimated value of $310. The total fiscal year 2017-2018 monetary contributions to date, $3,955.07. Discussion.
Great, thank you. Thank you, much appreciated.
Hearing no further discussion, this is a resolution, so it'll be a roll call vote.
Palmer?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Asamari?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Larkin?
Hi.
Superintendent Kelly, you don't get in on this one, sorry, that's just roll call.
Appreciate your thinking.
Still new, you know, just been a half a year.
Yeah, motion carries, and again, thank you everyone for your generous contributions. Next up would be Discussion Reports and Information Items. First up is Report for Members of the Board. Board Members will report on Board Activity since the last regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. Lauren, if you don't mind starting.
That'd be fine.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's been busy September, it seems like it keeps flying by. I was able to attend a high school football game and enjoyed the pep band as well for that performance, all the students did a great job. I was also in attendance at the Columbia Academy PTO Meeting last week. I'd like to see more parents involved in the Columbia Academy PTO. I was able to stop by the Valley View Picnic that they had last week, and just my work requirements only allowed me to stop by at the very end, but at the tail end, there were still a ton of families there, and so it was really great turnout, so great job to the Valley View PTO and their community for that picnic. I attended a Get Out the Vote webinar and have had many conversations with some constituents in the last couple of weeks as well.
Thank you. Laura?
I actually have no report.
Okay, thanks. Molly?
Yeah, I attended the Listening Session last week, and we did not have anyone join us for that Listening Session. And then the Work Session afterwards, also attended varsity football games, Columbia Academy football games, and a Strikers game. Yes, the Strikers are back in action. Yes, they are.
All right.
That's it, thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
I was also able to attend the Get Out the Vote webinar with some of the admin team, taken in some football and tennis already this year, went to the Work Session, have been to several events with boosters, be it Meet Raffler, bingo, that's it, bingo. And then also was able to talk with various people in the community at various outings, which is really great, and was able to go to the City Open House and see what the plans are for the city leading up to 2040 and see some of the different ideas out there, talked to people there.
Okay, thank you. Paula?
I attended the Work Session, and I've been talking to constituents, and I met a few times with some of the students at the high school.
Cool, thank you. I had a Chair Meeting and Work Session last weekend, or last week. The football game on Friday, and actually, prior to the football game, I thought it was actually kind of a neat idea, and I hope that the tradition continues, but they're doing like a tailgate party ahead of time out in the parking lot where they're asking parents and kids and things like that to come and gather, barbecue, and kind of hang out prior to the game, I think, this week. If I read the post correctly, that the tailgate is after the game because it's a four o'clock game, but if you have an inkling to show up and support the football team and the kids, it's actually, it was a lot of fun. It was a beautiful night, a little warm, but it was a nice night, so. And then Chair Meeting before tonight, and that's all I have to report. Superintendent Kelly, do you have a report this evening?
Chair Larkin, members, yes I do. Local 710 Teachers Union and the Columbia Heights Public School District have reached a tentative agreement, and this will be the subject of the closed session for negotiation strategy later this evening. Chair Larkin and I attended the memorial service for Tim Larson, who was our employee who passed suddenly. It was really a celebration of his life, and it really reflected who Tim was. The local custodial group is putting together a scholarship in his honor, and their base that they started with was $2,500, so it'll be a sizable scholarship for the recipient. And I just wanted to say one more time that Tim Larson will long be remembered in our minds and in our hearts. Activities Director Harrison, Buildings and Grounds Manager Tom Foley, and I met with the tennis coaches to go over the rehabilitation projects for the tennis courts next spring. We had our annual Fall Meeting on the Columbia Heights High School Anchor Program, and that took place with our collaborative partner Nexus, and that seems like the program is off to a strong start, and they seem to be pleased with the collaboration as well. We'll be doing ongoing evaluations throughout the year, and we'll report back to the Board as we did, again, in the spring, on how all that's going. I went to the middle school football game, and it was really a lot of fun. We won, and so congratulations to the coaches and to the team, and while I was there, I noticed that the tennis courts were just populated with all kinds of folks as well, so that was good for the entire time. We had a quarterly 916 Superintendent Meeting, and the focus of that meeting was twofold. One, we met with the new college president at Century College, and their admin team, and they seemed to have more of an appetite for partnering around college readiness, and so that was hopeful because it hasn't always been that way. And so we're looking for some partnerships as a 916 Superintendent Group to take a look at that. We also talked a lot about their, Century College has a great program for career and tech, and it's really not advertised quite as much from their perspective, they want to get out and they want more kids to understand all the things that they could possibly be taking that might lead to two-year degrees, certificate programs, and some real nice work at the end of it as well. So I'll be talking to the admin about that, and eventually the students. I had a great time, it was a little warm, but at the Columbia Heights Police and Fire Eat and Greet out at Circle Terrace, I think it's because I was walking in high heels, and there was like parking for days over there. Lots of fun, lots of food, and I want to thank Director Stunkel and admin for attending as well. And I must say, even though he was working for the fire department, John was doing a great job answering every question that the students had about that truck, fire truck. The E-12 Admin Team had its monthly meeting and its first lead and learn for its PLC in the last two weeks, and the book we've chosen to read this semester is on Generation Z at Work. That's by Stillman and Stillman, which is a father and son team. It's fascinating because they're from two different generations. And then, well, of course, they'd be from two different generations, but they have two different perspectives, one's a millennial and the other one is a Z, and it's fascinating. The youngest was just picked up by the Vikings to be their interpreter for the Generation Z, so it's a good read, if you need one, I'm almost done with mine, I'll be happy to loan it out. And then, on a more serious note, the superintendents of the districts who are withdrawing from ties had a meeting yesterday, and we met on mutual issues of concern as we withdraw, and that will be subject of a work study when we have it this month. Lots going on there, so we decided we would just have a chat at the work study. Director Stenwig and I waved at the people at the tailgating party as we went by, because we were on our way to the Crestview Gala last Friday, and that was a good time, they had good food and lots of silent auction items, of which we had to bid on, we were just made to do it. And then, I also attended the work study, the Chair Meeting, and I've had multiple contacts in some webinars with individual School Board Members, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up would be Item C, World's Best Workforce Update.
Chair Larkin, Members of the Board, Superintendent Kelly, Director Mahan and I are here this evening to present information on the World's Best Workforce Annual Report. Of course, as part of our mission to create worlds of opportunity for every learner, and we look to the core values this evening of community and excellence with this report. This evening, we're presenting an information item, however, we will be back for a governance question to approve the 2016-17 World's Best Workforce Annual Report on October 10, 2017. So the World's Best Workforce, this report is part of statute, so it became law in 2013, and really, the law states that District Strategic Plans to Support Teaching and Learning must be aligned with creating the world's best workforce. Part of the requirements include having an annual public meeting, which we held this month, and then the final report is due December 15. There is a District World's Best Workforce Committee that meets four times a year, and that's made up of community members and district staff, so parents, community members, and staff. We had a student at our last meeting as well. And really, the Department of Education and the Minnesota Legislature has outlined these five goals, areas for us to align to, and so we're finding this in all areas that I work in, so whether it's Achievement and Integration, whether it's working with American Indian Education, the departments at the Minnesota Department of Education are all aligning around this statute. So what I'm going to show this evening is twofold. We have a report, so a data report, that is required to be posted to our website. This has already been reviewed last week with the World's Best Workforce Committee to get input to bring to the Board, so I'm going to show you that data report, and also we like to send out an annual report to the community as well, so that'll be more colorful. So I'll give you our black and white data report, and then the colorful, which you have a copy of in front of you. Okay? So first, let's take a look at the five goal areas. The first one is all students are ready for school, so that is outlined in statute, being ready for kindergarten, and so we work with Director Stunkel and the Early Childhood to focus on this goal. Last year, our goal was really about increasing participation, and we did meet that goal and increased by more than 10% participation, and so in conversations, now we're really looking at academic data. So there's an assessment called the IGDE, and it's broken down into quartiles, and so we're looking at academic growth for students in pre-K to pre-K4 on that IGDE assessment. So the goal is to move students from one quartile at least up to the next quartile, if not more, on that assessment. Some strategies to do this, excuse me, the assessment is taken fall, winter, spring, the early childhood teachers meet regularly to look at data and have PLC conversations to adjust instruction, and then, of course, the Age 3 to Grade 3 Task Force will continue this year, focusing on lining up to kindergarten for second and third grade. It's one of my favorites. The second goal area is looking at third-grade literacy. So previously, last year, the committee set the goal of increasing by 5%. We did meet that goal, we exceeded that goal. We're really looking at, we'd love to increase each year by leaps and bounds, however, we know that with incremental change, we'll be able to get to our ultimate goal. And so, again, setting that incremental growth goal of 5% for third grade for this upcoming school year. Some of the strategies you're very familiar with, we are implementing our new literacy curriculum this year in kindergarten and first grade. We've had our first literacy leadership meeting this week, and we're hearing great reports, and teachers are getting supported with that. Press comes out of the University of Minnesota focusing on class-wide interventions for specific skills, so on October 6th, District In-Service Day, teachers will be trained on that in grades 2 through 5. We thought we would leave kindergarten and first grade alone since they're working on their new curriculum, right, so they can get it next year, they were happy about that. Lots of literacy intervention time and dedicated time for professional development, really honing in on pedagogy and instruction, and what are we teaching, and really dissecting what that means and how we're linking to standards. For our professional development this year, we're not bringing in lots of different sessions, we're just really honing in on our instruction and the standards, and where that's at, and what kind of supports are needed. We're very excited for the Encore After-School Program to start very soon, in just a few days. We know, based on previous data, that that will increase our academic growth and proficiency. The third goal area is focused around achievement gaps and equity. This one, we pretty much plateaued, so we have high goals, we're very focused in this area, wanting to make sure that all of our students have access to rigorous coursework, access to high-level standards. Similarly, to the rest of Minnesota and most places in the nation, we saw a plateau this last year. So we are not easing up on our goal, for next year, we are going to again aim for that 10%, it's a high goal, but with that really precise focus this year, I think that we're going to be able to move that needle. So some of the strategies that we use to do that is Avid, of course, Avid's mission is to close the achievement gap, it's written in their mission statement. Our equity team is working hard, both at the district level and at all the schools. Our professional development focusing on the skill set, but also that mindset, making sure that we're opening access to all of our students to high-level courses and inclusive curriculum, we've talked about here as well, and frequent small data cycles and interventions when needed, and of course Encore as well, based on past data, has really been successful. Our fourth goal area is attaining career and college readiness. With this one, we're not only focusing on how many kids graduate necessarily, or just the 10th and 11th and 12th graders, we're also looking all the way down to third grade. So the benchmarks are third-grade reading, 10th-grade reading, and 11th-grade math. We did see increases from one year to the next in both third-grade reading and 10th-grade reading, however, we saw a decrease in the 11th-grade math, so I put us there as not met, and we were able to do some dissecting on where we're at and what needs to happen, and we're addressing those issues. So some of the strategies that we're focusing on for that broad picture, you know, we say thinking about college starts in kindergarten or pre-kindergarten, so how are we addressing that? At the high school level, we have our 11th-grade academic readiness course, that's new this year. Now, when we started the early college preparatory classes, those students haven't taken the MCA yet. That was, we started back in 9th grade, and they're just getting to 11th grade now, the first cohort, so I'm checking in on that cohort this year to see how they're doing. The 9th and the 10th grade boost, school-wide focus on literacy again with that avid critical reading strategy, Avid, of course, other supports like College Possible and Ramp Up, and again, Encore is going to be robust at the high school this year as well. Our fifth goal area is all students graduate from high school. This is always a funny measure because they really don't release the official graduation rate until December, so I put for 2017-18, for this current year, we can't look at 2017 to get the official 2017 graduation rate, however, the past two years have been higher than the Minnesota State average for Columbia Heights High School graduation rate, and even though we are higher than the state, we still have very high goals and expectations, and we're still shooting for that 90%, so we're going to maintain with that goal. Some of the supports that we have for that goal are Naviance, which is an online tool and system that tracks students' credits and helps them apply for college, Homework Lab, credit recovery opportunities, we talked about the early college boost classes in Avid, and really, when we're measuring college and career readiness, a test score is one thing, but of course, in our district, we also focus on our core values and our life skills, so there's lots of different ways to measure. Just briefly, this is a picture across the state of Minnesota, so these are not Columbia Heights data, this is state of Minnesota data, reading MCA grades, so all the tested grades, 3 through 8 and 10. As you can see, across the state of Minnesota, we're seeing a plateau in scores, they're just not budging, so, and then you can see also the, as the state calls it, the achievement gap is persistent and larger statewide than it is here in Columbia Heights, of course. So statewide issue, you'll see, this is math, similar across the last few, four years, very similar scores across the state and a persistent gap as well. So definitely more conversations to be had, we had lively conversations at our World's Best Workforce Meeting last week around these topics, and the community members are really committed to supporting our schools and having conversations about what we can do to do what's best for our kids. In the report, there are some other narrative pieces, so non-data pieces, the state asks for our process for making sure that all students have equitable access to excellent teachers, that's a mouthful, that just means that we have a process in place, so we know that a student in, say, 2nd grade maybe has a 1st-year teacher in 2nd grade, and then we make sure that the same group of students doesn't have another brand-new teacher in 3rd grade and another brand-new teacher in 4th grade. Even though our brand-new teachers are wonderful, we want to make sure that our students are, and the state wants to make sure they're exposed to veteran teachers as well. So that's what that is, and we do have a process in place. The Gift and Talented Identification Process is well posted on our website, and it's more of a narrative of the multiple opportunities and different types of assessments in order to be identified as gifted, not based on one assessment. And then the Assessment Calendar. So, now I'll show you the glassy, and you do have a copy of this in front of you, the updated paper version should be at your seat. So as we open up the report, and again, this was really a collaboration between Director Mahan's Department and the Department of Teaching and Learning, along with input from the World's Best Workforce Committee, really wanting to explain, one, the five goals that are the required areas for the World's Best Workforce, but also adding two other goal areas that we have in our district, which is Technology Integration and Social Emotional Learning. So all of those are outlined, and Casey and his staff designed, so all the look of it and all of the design are designed by the Communications Department, which is really great that they've been able to take care of that for us. But we wanted to give some more in-depth information on what do the goal areas mean, and what are we actually doing for kindergarten readiness and personalized learning in all of the areas. So I'll just scroll through, those are the, more of the goal areas that I just described. And then, right in the middle of the document, you'll see kind of a by-the-numbers, we wanted to showcase some of the numbers, and then, of course, share with the community some of the really important facts and figures coming out of the district. And then it's always important to showcase, or provide information on what do we have, what do we offer at each of the schools, so you'll see that there on the next page. And then, a few pages of highlights, district highlights from last school year. So you can see the Medal of Honor, for example, Assistant Principal Kulik's award that he won, the basketball tournament, lots of different highlights throughout the district from last year. And then at the end, a reminder for parents with four-year-olds and any age really, that we're always available for enrollment, and when people are thinking about next school year, they can make sure they're enrolling in January and coming on into our schools and our placement center to ask questions. So that's our annual report.
Do you have any questions or comments?
I have a couple of questions. In looking at the annual report, it looks to me, I mean, it's very, it looks great, it's very well done. One concern that I would have is that we're not talking about here, anywhere in the annual report, any of the goals that we are not achieving. Do we think it's important to communicate with our community not just what we're doing well, but what we are still struggling with, and what our plan is to do those things?
We have to do both, in fact, and so what we've been doing and what is required is to simply post on our website the data report, however, we wanted to provide more information, and so in the annual report, the colorful version, there's a link for more information on the data report and the required areas, but the Department of Education requires us to post the black and white data on the website.
Which I think is important, but I think, you know, I do think we need to talk about what we're doing well and what we're not doing well in the annual report, otherwise, it's not an annual report, it's an advertisement, and so I think we need to at least focus on here too, with some of our areas of improvement, strategies that we're doing, we know, our community knows that we are struggling in certain areas, and I think we need to be transparent about that, I think it needs to be included in the annual report, as well as then an opportunity for us to talk about what are we doing about those things, how are we addressing those issues?
Thanks. And I would agree with that, while a segment of the community knows that we're working hard, there's also distrust with another part of the community, and we need to increase transparency, and so if we're putting it on the website, why not put it here, because, like Lauren said, we don't-
Because, like Lauren said, we don't, this is not supposed to be an ad. So that's where I stand on it.
Thanks.
You want? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next up, Minnesota Department of Education Review and Comments.
Good evening, Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. This information, or big part of this information, if you remember, I think about a 50-page document, review and comment, was presented back on August 8th. And so I'm not going to go over the entire details of that document again, but just to present our letter that we received from the state, directly from the Commissioner's Office, and just the results, the summary was also posted in our public posting areas and like the some focus. So at this time, there's no real action. This is just an information item for the board. So according to Minnesota statute, one of the things that we have to do is, you know, again, provide all this documentation to the state for review and comment, and the state reviews it, takes some time to go over it, and gives us a nice little letter in the end, and which I'm happy to report to the board that it was a positive review and comment. So I'm just going to read a couple of things from there. You have it in front of you, but for the listening audience, Columbia Heights Public Schools, ISD 13, is proposing a single-question bond referendum on November 7, 2017. The ballot question would authorize $16 million for bond authority to finance facility and site improvements at North Park and the high school. The school board has already approved to move forward with this. That was one part. And then a positive review from the state is the next part, which is this letter. Based upon the department's analysis of the school district's required documentation and other pertinent information from sources of the Minnesota Department of Education, the Commissioner of Education provides a positive review and comment. So this gives us the final full authority needed to move forward. And again, there's no further action needed by the board at this time. We've already taken action to move this. Any questions on the review and comment?
Have it back.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
Okay, next up is the first reading for policies. Those policies are 425 Staff Development, 203.2 Order of Regular School Board Meeting, 602 Organization of School Calendar and School Day, 603 Curriculum Development, 604 Instructional Curriculum, 607 Organization of Grade Levels, 610 Field Trips, 903 Visitor to the School District Buildings and Sites. These policies will be posted, and then will appear on a future agenda for approval. Any questions on that?
Only one. Was there, this is the first reading?
It's the first reading.
Okay. I don't see any substantial changes in anything here. So just mostly review?
Majority of them were reviewed.
Or majority of them were? Yeah, I'm, I'm.
You have one in particular?
Well, I'm just kind of scrolling down through here. I see very, very little changes. Is this, is this an annual one, where we have to approve these on an annual basis?
Some of them were just MSBA updates.
Yeah, let me, Staff Development.
I believe they were just a period of review.
Nothing. Okay. That's, yeah, that's what I, that's what it looked like. Okay, thanks.
I think most of it was on reporting.
Hmm?
On Page 33.
Page 33. Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
Under Staff Development, yep.
Anyone else? All right, we want our action items. First up is a resolution appointing election judges. And Dawn will be speaking to that.
Good evening, Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. I'm here tonight seeking approval of election judges for our November 7 special election. These judges were obtained and trained by NOKA County Elections Department.
Okay, we have a resolution to read, but I need a motion to move that forward first.
So moved.
Laura?
Second.
Paula? Thank you. Resolution reads as follows. Whereas Columbia Heights Independent School District Number 13 will be conducting an election on November 7, 2017, and whereas pursuant to Minnesota statute, Section 204 B.21, election judges for precincts in a school district election must be appointed by the board of that school district, and whereas persons selected to serve meet all requirements of Minnesota statute and county administrative policy and have been trained and certified pursuant to law. Now therefore be it resolved by the school board of Columbia Heights Independent School District Number 13, state of Minnesota, as follows. The individuals listed in attachment A are hereby appointed to serve as election judges for the school district election to be held November 7, 2017. In the event circumstances require judges to be appointed, in addition to the person's name to this resolution, the clerk of election is authorized to appoint as necessary, provided the person's appointed meet, provided the person's appointed meet all requirements of Minnesota statute and Minnesota administrative policy. Any discussion? Questions? Okay. So resolution, so Nanny, roll call vote, please.
Palmer?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Samurai?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Larkin?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dawn. Next up is the pay 2018 preliminary levy.
Good evening, Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. I'm here tonight to get approval on the pay, the 2017 payable 2018 levy, and I'm asking you to approve that levy as maximum, which allows any changes that happen with the state on the 39-page levy calculation. If there's any changes, then we can capture those changes. So you were presented the preliminary levy at the last board meeting, and that was September 12. Bill did the presentation, and the change since then has been $14,971.71. So I'm asking you to approve the levy as maximum.
Start with a motion and move that forward.
So moved.
Marley?
Second.
Paula? Questions or discussion?
I'm assuming $14,000 isn't surprising. It's?
No, and there'll be other changes, you know, before we get the final approval in December. And it'll be, you'll have a chance at the tax hearing to see that, so.
Okay.
And just for the record, correct me if I'm wrong, but maxing the levy in the maximum amount is standard practice. I mean, I watched the city of Columbia Heights just recently do that to allow for any changes that take place, and if the changes come back at a lesser number, then that money goes back.
Correct, yeah. It's standard. You want to do maximum? I've been a business manager a long time. You always do maximum. There's errors and sometimes corrections to the formulas, and you want to make sure that we get the most on the levy that we can.
And I kind of, if nothing else, the view in public to understand that the maximum doesn't mean we're going to, if the numbers come back less, we're not going to keep the extra.
Oh, no, no, no.
Okay. Right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Here are none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Impose? Abstain? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Denise. Okay, board topics. I have one that I wanted to talk about. We have been, as a board, have direct administration to move us forward towards a strategic planning, and the conversation that was had was when we were going to have our training or our meetings, and there's going to be two, three-hour meetings that are going to be coming up. Initially, there was some conversation about trying to pack those into October, which is already a pretty busy month, I know. Therefore, I agree. My suggestion to the superintendent was to, if the board concurs, is to look at, maybe put in one in November and one in December, not so far apart that what we got in November isn't making sense in come December. But, and the other piece of that is that Dennis, jeez, I mean, some of it's going to have to be around what his schedule is. So if you guys are okay with it, I thought that we would, I would suggest anyway, that we get through this month of October first, if that's okay. Is that all right? Does anybody?
Go with the board.
Yep.
Okay. And then I know.
From here to January is rough for me regardless, so I'll work it out.
Okay. And the only other thing I wanted to mention is, you're still here, Mary, but the Sabre Streets is Saturday, the 30th, and the Times, again, I wrote them down.
1:30 and 3.
1:33, okay, so if you're available, 1:30 and 3, that'll be at the library, is that correct?
Correct, yep.
Okay. And that's all I have for board topics. Anybody else have any?
Just the tailgate following the football game, which is at 4 o'clock, so community members, fast-forwarding through some of the more exciting highlights of the meeting, might stop on this and see.
We're celebrating.
Hope to have everyone there, even if you're not a huge football fan.
Celebrating the victory, I hope, at that.
Yeah, of course.
Okay. You have something?
I just have one announcement regarding the 2017 bond referendum information. To help voters make an informed decision on Election Day, which is Tuesday, November 7, the district has an informational website that is at cullheights.k12mn.us/2017bond. And additionally, all residents within the district boundaries are being mailed an informational mailing. And then we will be holding two, possibly three, but we have two confirmed community forums in the district. One will be at North Park, and that will be Monday, October 16, at 6:15 p.m. And the second one will be held at Columbia Heights High School on Thursday, October 12, at 7:30 p.m. in the PAC, and there'll be more information forthcoming, but since we just arrived at the dates, we wanted to make sure that you had it.
What time is that again, for the high school?
The high school's at 7:30.
7:30.
Anyone else for board topics? Okay. In accordance with Minnesota statute 13D.03, the board will meet in a closed session for the item on the agenda for the purpose of discussing negotiation strategies, 8:24, and this meeting is adjourned.